Good afternoon, everyone. What an auspicious group we have today. There must be something going on today. Anyway, welcome. Glad to see you all here. This is the regular meeting of the Ranch Mirage City Council and Community Services District, the Energy Authority, Housing Authority, Joint Powers Finance Authority, Library and Observatory, and Redevelopment Successor Agency Boards. I would now like to ask you to please join me in a salute to our great country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Downs?
I'm here.
Councilmember Fromberg Edelstein?
Here.
Councilmember O'Keefe?
Here.
Mayor Protem Molado?
Here.
Mayor Wile?
Here.
We now have something on the calendar that is, looks unusual to me. And it says, "The Appointment of a Mayor and Mayor Protem." What an exciting day. And this is truly exciting because you have two people that are so well-deserving of this appointment. The action that we're about to take is a recommendation to appoint my good friends and colleagues, Lynn Molado to serve as mayor and Michael O'Keefe to serve as Mayor Protem. At this time, I'd like to make a comment. It has been a privilege to serve as mayor of Ranch Mirage for my third term over these past 13 years. I am deeply grateful for the opportunity and for the trust that this community continues to place in me. Our successes as a city are the result of a collaborative city council, and indeed it is collaborative. And the steady leadership of our city manager, whose financial expertise and business-focused approach continues to guide our city with excellence. Thank you. Ranch Mirage remains one of the most financially sound and well-managed communities in the region, and that is something we all can take pride in. This past year has been one of exciting progress and major milestones. The groundbreaking of Disney's first-ever master-planned residential community here in Ranch Mirage is an achievement that brings national attention and long-term economic promise to our city. The Cattino development is moving forward impressively, and by next fall, residents and visitors will be able to enjoy its vibrant mix of restaurants, cafes, specialty shops, and the remarkable Crystal Lagoon that will serve as its centerpiece. These thoughtful, high-quality projects reflect the standard of excellence we expect and work hard to maintain. We have also continued to address one of the most important priorities: expanding affordable housing and workforce housing. By approving additional housing opportunities for our hospitality and hospital employees, we are taking meaningful steps to ensure that those who support our community each and every day also have the opportunity to live within our bounds. This remains essential to sustaining a strong and balanced workforce. I would like to extend my congratulations to my friend and colleague Lynn Molado as she steps into the role of mayor. Lynn brings extensive government experience, a steady and thoughtful leadership style, and a deep commitment to the residents of Ranch Mirage. I am confident that our city will thrive under her guidance. I also congratulate Michael O'Keefe as he assumes the role of Mayor Protem. His dedicated and careful judgment have consistently strengthened this council, and his continued service will benefit our entire community. I also want to give a major thanks to frankly what drives me and supports me and is the backbone of my very existence, and that's my darling wife Jenny. She is my inspiration. She has been with me the entire tenure that I've been on the council, which is 13 years and six years on the planning commission and a number of years before I got involved in public service. She is my everyday motivation, and I can say unequivocally that without her, so much of my success would be gone. And with that, I would like to present her with just a token of my appreciation. Thank you again for the honor of serving as your mayor. I look forward to supporting my colleagues and continuing my work on behalf of the residents of Ranch Mirage as a member of the city council. Thank you very much. We will now ask for council comments, and I will start on my left with Councilmember Eve Fromberg Edelstein.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been an honor to watch you last year and learn from you. You've been an incredible mentor and leader, and I appreciate all your support in this big job. You've made it a lot easier to manage, and to our new mayor coming in, well, there aren't enough words. That's why we're wearing matching jackets. So, other than that, I don't have any other comments today, but congratulations to both of you and also to Mayor Protem.
Because of you, the job is easy. Thank you. Michael O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. When Ted and I were running for election last year, I told him that if he won, he was going to have a banner year. I was right. He won, and he has led our city as mayor this year with steady and professional and thoughtful leadership. And it doesn't matter if he's at City Hall or at Starbucks. We all know Ted. What some folks may not know is that this year Ted was also the chair of the Executive Committee at the Coachella Valley Association of Governments. That's a big job. They work on transportation, homelessness, safety, conservation, and much more. So, not only was he representing all of us as mayor here at City Hall, but he also represents the city throughout the valley. I know that this takes a lot of work, a lot of time, and working with a lot of different personalities. But I will say, Ted, you made it look effortless, which is a testament to your leadership skills. And that's not just me talking. Some of our valley's most important officials agree. Congressman Calvert called Ted a great leader. Supervisor Perez said he was a true public servant. Tribal Chair Reed Milanovich said he was not only a friend, but a visionary. These are high praises from people who know what the work entails. So, I would just like to say thank you for your work this year and for the last 13 years and for your third term as mayor. I want to encourage you to keep trying until you get it right. I'm just joking. You had a great job. Thank you for everything that you do, and I look forward to working with you another year.
Well, thank you, Michael. Those are very kind and flattering words. I appreciate that. And as I said, I look forward to your term as Mayor Protem, and I know that you'll do an incredible job. Councilmember Downs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I have Ted to thank for my time on the Planning Commission, and also I have Ted to thank for my time on this city council. So, it was in 2019 that there was an opening on the Planning Commission, and for a variety of reasons, I had spoken at commission meetings a few times, and I had to spend some time with members of the Planning Department and with members of this council, especially Ted, on an issue that involved my homeowners association. And Ted was always very helpful to me and to my community, so I appreciated that. In any event, so 2019, an opening came on the Planning Commission. I spoke with Ted. He encouraged me to apply. He said that he thought that I had maybe an opportunity to do a decent job on the Planning Commission. So, I did apply, and I was appointed. And then in November of 2021, when legendary council member in this city, Dana Hobart, concluded that it was time for him to retire and step down from public service, I again spoke with Ted and asked him about the wisdom of my applying to fill that seat. And Ted, again, was very encouraging. So, I did apply, and I was unanimously selected by this council to serve the balance of Dana's term. And then I was elected for a full four-year term in November of 2022. So, in my time on council, Ted, he's been a source of wisdom. You've been a source of common sense. You've been insightful, and I appreciate that. Ted has always had two guideposts that he tells all of us about. He said it often about the way in which he makes decisions that we have to think about on this council and the votes that he has to cast. There are two issues that he uses as his guideposts: that which is best for the residents of the city of Ranch Mirage and that which is best for the future of the city. That's it. Nothing else. Those are the two guidelines that Ted has passed on to all of us. So, thank you for your confidence in me and my time on the Planning Commission. Thank you for your confidence in me and my time here in this city council. Thank you, my friend, not just for your steady hand at the tiller this last year as mayor, but for the last 13 years. I think it's almost 14 now that you have served on this council. Thank you, Ted.
Oh, thank you, Steve. Your comments are most appreciated, and I will say this, that you two have been exemplary in your position, not only on the council, but previously as mayor yourself. So, again, I thank you and look forward to continuing a relationship and working with you. And now, it's my great pleasure to introduce for the last time a Mayor Protem, a person that is about to step into the shoes of mayor, an incredible lady who is dedicated, thoughtful, sincere, compassionate about what she does. And I am so proud to call her my friend. And with that, Mayor Protem, here's your microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It has been indeed a pleasure and honor to serve as your Mayor Protem to you and the city council. It's been a very, very busy year, and it will continue to be a very busy year with the year upcoming. And you have provided wonderful guidance, counsel, direction. I always felt very, very comfortable if I had a question, I could come to you, and you had your thoughts, but you'd present two or three different options that I could head into or to look at those options and see how they affected the city. I too am of the belief that we have two purposes: one, to serve the citizens of this great city, but also how it affects them and how it benefits the city. And you continued that tradition, as has been carried out through past city councils, and it's a wonderful legacy that the city council here in Ranch Mirage has and continues to be. Thank you for your kindness. Thank you for your words of wisdom. Thank you for your friendship. You still have your computer in my office? My new office? No. This has been an ongoing week of teasing each other about moving in and out of the offices we rotate. I'll keep it safekeeping for you. But thank you, Mr. Mayor, for everything you have done for not only me, but for the council and for the city, not only this year, but the past 13 years. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Lynn. I consider you a dear friend, and I'm so very proud of you and look forward to frankly you becoming the mayor within the next few minutes. Thank you.
No pressure. With that, I'd like to invite Mayor Wile to the front here. We have a little presentation we'd like to share with you. This beautiful shadow box is from the city council and the staff. For your hard work this past year and years past, 13 years past, we are indebted and most grateful to your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lynn, and thank you to my colleagues who have made the job so much easier. You're a great group to work with, and frankly, we have the very best staff that I can imagine. Everyone that's sitting on this dais and those members of the staff that are not here just make us look good. And I have said many times that we on the city council, and this is probably true for a number of city councils, but we get far too much credit for the success of our city because the workers and the working bees are the staff. They're the ones that make everything work and make us look good. So, it's a thank you to them. It's a thank you to my colleagues, and I look forward to continuing to serve the great city of Ranch Mirage. Thank you very much.
Are there any other compliments that I can?
Anyway, again, thank you for all the kind words. We now will go into...
You can ask Chrissy to do that.
Oh. Okay.
I know you're just trying to skip the vote so you can stay mayor, but our city clerk has to do a staff report.
Thank you. Honorable mayor and council members, in accordance with the Ranch Mirage City Charter, each non-election year at the second regular meeting in November, the city council shall appoint one council member to serve as mayor and one council member to serve as Mayor Protem. Prior to these appointments being made, council members shall each be identified by the length of time they have continuously served on the city council without having served as mayor. The new mayor shall be the council member with the longest term of consecutive service without having served as mayor. The Mayor Protem shall be the council member who, to the greatest extent possible, appears to be the person most likely to meet the eligibility requirements to succeed the newly-appointed mayor. Based on service records, Lynn Molado is due to serve as mayor, and Michael O'Keefe is due to serve as Mayor Protem. That concludes my staff report, but if you'd like, I can go ahead and handle public comments. I did not receive any comment cards for this item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll turn it back over to you.
I think at this point, we would call for a vote.
Actually, we need to make a motion, and I'd be happy to make that motion, that the city council appoint Lynn Molado to serve as mayor and Michael O'Keefe to serve as Mayor Protem for the next 12 months.
I will second.
There's a motion and a second?
Okay, and I will...
This will be a voice?
Yes.
This will be a voice vote?
Yes, I will do a roll call vote. Councilmember Downs?
Yes.
Councilmember Fromberg Edelstein?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Molado?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Absolutely. Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. And now, I would like to invite Mayor Molado and Mayor Protem O'Keefe down to take their oath of office.
Congratulations. Thank you, Chrissy. Okay, so we'll do it over at the same time. Just raise your right hand.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, if you two want to take a photo together, and then once they do that, if I can have the other council members come down for a photo as well?
Okay.
Maybe he's had enough followers today.
We're also here for problems we don't know. We spent about an hour on one report with lots of followers.
You're still the prettiest girl.
I know. He's got lipstick, too.
Stop saying "thank you."
I'm fine.
Hey, Mayor. Love you. Love you, too.
It's real. It's real. As my friend and fellow council member Eve Fromberg says, "It's real." Well, it is my honor and privilege to serve in my first term as mayor and very, very grateful for the support that makes this work possible. Ted, where'd you go? I know we're playing musical chairs. There we go. I want to thank Mayor Ted Wile for his steadfast dedication to our city, his thoughtful leadership in the many years devoted to building the strong foundation we continue to benefit and enjoy from today. I'm deeply appreciative, and congratulations to Mayor Protem Michael O'Keefe, and thank you to my fellow council members Eve Fromberg Edelstein and Steve Downs for their continued teamwork. I look forward to our continued collaboration and progress for the city of Ranch Mirage. There's so much that is happening. It's exciting, and we are moving forward at, it seems like, warp speeds, but it's all good. I'd be remiss if I didn't include past council members and city leadership for their kindness, their words of wisdom and experience they've shared with me along the way. A heartfelt thank you to our city staff for the work they do every day. I often share with the public that this city council makes policy. All city councils make policy, and we receive so much credit. But really, the credit, as the mayor, former mayor alluded to moments ago, it is the staff. It's the talented staff, these wonderful professionals that share their wisdom, their expertise, their recommendations that help us as a council make sound decisions. I've always said that Ranch Mirage has a legacy of making thoughtful and measured decisions, and they help us to continue doing that. There are some wonderful people in the audience today that I'd like to thank for taking time to be here: elected officials. We have Nancy Ross that's here today. I see Kathleen Juraski here today with Palm Springs Cemetery District. Mayor Ross is with the city of... Nancy, are you still here or did you run out? I think she had to go to another meeting. She's mayor with the city of Cathedral City. I'd also like to thank my former boss, former city manager of Cathedral City, Don Bradley, who took time out of his day. He's a wonderful gentleman, and whatever knowledge and expertise I have, it's been under, it was under his leadership that I gained that wonderful information. Have my, I see a lot of people here from Del Webb. Thank you for being here. And from the Ranch Mirage Library, thank you for being here, friends. It's very touching, very, very touching. And last but not least, I'd like to thank my family for being here. They took off from work today. My son Zach Caluccia and his wonderful wife, my daughter-in-law Brenda, and Zach's dad and my favorite gentleman, Jim Caluccia, thank you so, so much for being here today. Okay, with that, we need to move on. We have a meeting. Okay. City council comments have already taken place. Oh, I'd like to make one addition, if I may. This week, we lost one of our colleagues in our neighboring community, Cathedral City. I'd like all of us to remember the, and take a moment to cherish, Councilmember Mark Carnavale. Mark was a dedicated community member. I knew him for at least 35, 40 years. He was passionate about Cathedral City. He worked hard for Cathedral City and as well as the outside agencies that all of us as council members participated on. He was passionate about homelessness and worked very closely with the SEVAG officials to find answers and solutions to problems. If all of us could just remember in our thoughts and in our prayers, this gentleman who dedicated so much of his life, I'd greatly appreciate it. Our hearts go out to his wife... Our hearts go out to his wife Rhonda, his kids Nick and Carrie, and all of his grandchildren. He was a wonderful husband, father, and grandfather. Thank you. And with that- Okay, we are now going into council comments, and I will start to my left with councilmember Eve Fromberg-Ellstein.
No further comments at this time.
Okay. Councilmember Ted Wile?
No, I think I've said it all and again. Congratulations to yourself and Michael, who I know will carry on splendidly in your new position. So, best of luck.
Thank you. Councilmember Steve Downs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, congratulations to you again on your appointment to serve as mayor for the upcoming year. You'll do a great job, and I look forward to working with you. So, what I did want to talk about for a couple of minutes is this rotation method that we use in determining who will be mayor. It serves this city very well. It's part of our city charter, and so it's an issue that we have followed for years now. The way in which we handle the mayoral rotation in the city removes political rancor among members of this council. It causes us to work more collectively together and in a better way for the betterment of this city and encourages all of us to work constructively for every person in this city. We sometimes have suggestions about electing a mayor. I don't think so. I'm not in favor of that. I think that the reason our city is so well managed and fiscally responsible is because of our political structure, and there are two issues there. One is the mayoral rotation, but the other is that we do not have districts in this city. Every one of us in this, on this dais is responsible for every square foot of the city. And I'll give you an example that makes some sense to me. So, at recent council meetings, we've had discussions about the cellphone study that we recently did. I do not want to be in the position of trying to fight for my district to get a cellphone tower built to the detriment of my colleagues in their districts. I don't think that makes any sense at all. I think what makes good sense is if every one of us on this dais is committed to finding the right place, the right set of towers in the right places, so that every single resident of this city benefits, and that's what no districting does. That's what election at large does. It makes us all equally responsible. Now, if this were Los Angeles, if we had 2 million people to watch out for, or 4 million, whatever the population of Los Angeles is now, things might be different, but it's not here. We only have 20,000 residents, and all of us are equally capable of watching out for the best interests of everyone in this city, and that's what districting, no district does, does for us. And the rotation system that we've utilized for years now, as I said a few moments ago, it simply removes the rancor that sometimes is involved in city councils where they argue with one another about who will be mayor. We don't have to worry about that. Lynn Mulatto knows today that 12 months from now, Michael O'Keefe will become mayor. Michael O'Keefe knows today that 12 months after his, after he has sworn in as mayor, that Eve Fromberg-Ellstein will become mayor. We know that. We don't have to worry about it. We don't have to argue with one another about it. We know who the leadership will be, and I think it serves us well, and I think it has served us well for years and years in this city. This is one of the reasons that this city is looked up to by every other city in this desert as being an exceptionally well-managed city and a fiscally responsible city is because of the way we are structured. Now, we, as I said earlier, we do hear every now and then arguments about, let's have a mayor, let's have districting. I'm opposed to it. I think it just might come up in next year's election, and we'll talk about it, and everybody will have a chance to share their opinions about that if it does come up. I am in favor of continuing the system that we have now because I think it stood us in good stead for years, and I think it will stand us in good stead for years to come. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mayor Mulatto. First, I want to welcome everybody here today. Thank you for coming. It's very nice of you. And a special welcome to my friends from Del Webb. Thank you for showing up today, and to my husband, Jim Hain, as well. First, I want to do congratulations to Katie Slimko and the Chamber for that great expo last week. I knew that it was going to be good. I didn't know it was going to be that good. It was a great success, so great job. So, everyone here, you know that I'm going to say that it is an honor and a privilege and a big responsibility to serve as mayor pro tem. You know that because it's true, and I know that, which is why I am humbled sitting here today. I will always be a resident representative for all of our residents, as we are a welcoming city to all. My pledge to you is that I will always place the interests of the city of Rancho Mirage above any other agenda. I will honor my fiduciary duty to the city and its residents, and I will never break the public trust you have given me by electing me to this council. So, I'm looking forward to a great year ahead, and Isaiah, don't listen to this part. Our city manager, Isaiah Hagerman, is a great city manager, and the team of directors and staff that he has pulled together is second to none. I also look forward to working with my colleagues, councilmember Downs, councilmember Fromberg-Ellstein, for another year. But I'd like to take just a moment and give you a couple of thoughts about the new incoming mayor. Working with Lynn Mulatto for the last two years has been a real education. She has vast governmental experience. She knows more about policy and procedure than most people will ever know. And when she talks about it, she does it with that pleasant voice and a smile on her face, but make no doubt, she is focused like a laser on the issues that are important to our city, and she's focused like a laser on those issues that mean so much to her, especially helping disadvantaged folks who need help. She will be our first woman mayor in seven years, and I'm proud to serve as mayor pro tem alongside her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. With that, you've heard enough from me already today, so we'll move on to city manager comments.
None today, Madam Mayor, so we'll go right into the consent calendar. The council has six items on the consent calendar for consideration. Items 5A through 5F. Item 5A is to waive the full reading of any ordinance introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item 5B is the revision of the library and observatory collection development policy and compliance with the California Freedom to Read Act AB 1825, second reading adoption. Item 5C is to approve the November 6, 2025, regular city council meeting minutes. Item 5D is to receive and file the Rancho Mirage Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission annual report. Item 5E are to approve the contracts, and 5F are demands. Before we go to council comments or questions, I'll ask the city clerk to take any public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on the consent calendar? No speakers.
With that, may I ask for a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
We'll move on to public hearings. Item number six on the agenda, the first public hearing. Annexation number 201 to Community Facilities District Number One in connection with tentative parcel map number 38492. Location approximately 2,000 feet south of Frank Sinatra Drive on the west side of Vista del Sol, Artemis Court. And Jacob De La Cruz, financial analyst, is here to give the report. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you, Mary. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. This item is to hold a public hearing for annexation 201 into Community Facilities District Number One. This is the second and final step in the city's annexation process for developments within the city's jurisdiction. The first step was considered and approved at the September 18 council meeting. The territory proposed for annexation is located approximately 2,000 feet south of Frank Sinatra Drive on the west side of Vista del Sol and is comprised of one parcel totaling approximately 5.05 acres, and the project is slated to subdivide the parcel into four single-family residential lots. At the conclusion of today's public hearing, provided written protests have not been filed and in the absence of a majority protest, the city council may consider adoption of the attached resolution calling a special election, declaring the results of the election, determining the validity of prior proceedings, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing the recording of an amendment to the notice of special tax lien. Staff recommends approval, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Jacob. Madam Clerk, are you ready to deliver the public testimony?
I am, thank you. The ballot for the six eligible votes was received on October 24, 2025, and was in favor. Therefore, votes cast in favor equal 100% of total votes cast, and I can go ahead and take public testimony? Is there any, I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide public testimony on this public hearing item? No speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Recommended action is to adopt Resolution Number 2025, next in order, calling an election on levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District Number One, Annexation Number 201, declaring the election results, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing the recordation of the amendment of the notice of special tax lien.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion? A second?
Oh, I'll second that motion.
I'm sorry, Eve. Thank you. Second motion, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Terrific. Next item, public hearing. 6B, Annexation 202 to Community Facilities District Number One in connection with preliminary development plan case number PDP 24-002. Location south of Via Vale, west of Monterey Avenue, and east of Rancho Mirage Dog Park, also known as the Rosetta Apartments. Jacob De La Cruz will give this report as well.
Thank you again, Mayor. This item is to hold a public hearing for annexation 202 into Community Facilities District Number One. This is the second and final step in the city's annexation process for developments within the city's jurisdiction. The first step was considered and approved at the October 16 council meeting. The territory proposed for annexation is located south of Via Vale, west of Monterey Avenue, and east of the Rancho Mirage Dog Park, and is comprised of one parcel totaling approximately 10 acres. At the conclusion of today's public hearing, provided written protests have not been filed and in the absence of a majority protest, the city council may consider adoption of the attached resolution calling a special election, declaring the results of the election, determining the validity of prior proceedings, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing the recording of an amendment to the notice of special tax lien. Staff recommends approval, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Jacob. Christie, do you have, would you like to open the public hearing?
Yes. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide public testimony on this item? No speakers, and I'll go ahead and read the election results for this one. The ballot for the 10 eligible votes was received on October 12, 2025, and was in favor. Therefore, votes cast in favor equal 100% of total votes cast.
Thank you. Are there any council comments? No council comments. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 2025, next in order, calling an election on levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District Number One, Annexation Number 202, declaring the election results, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing the recordation of the amendment of the notice of special tax lien.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Next item is 6C, continued from November 6, 2025, city council meeting, minea Duke, Dukic, excuse me, Director of Development Services reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff is requesting additional time to bring the project forward, and as such, we're recommending continuing the item to December 4.
Thank you.
I'll move to continue the item to December 4.
I'll second.
Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Wonderful. Now, it's time to open non-agenda public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to speak on issues not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Our first speaker is Susan Ragsdale.
I am so pleased that you're the mayor now, Mayor Mulatto. You have a beautiful heart. It's very obvious, and I know you're going to do the greatest job ever. I'm really happy for you too, Michael. Thank you. I want to humbly request, my public comment, which I still have on my phone, is three minutes and 30 seconds, and I couldn't cut it anymore. I'm sorry, somebody's texting me. I couldn't cut it anymore, and I would like to request that I be able to say it all because it's important.
Please proceed.
Thank you so much. Okay. All right. Oh, shoot. Okay. I write all these things on my phone. All righty, here I go. All righty. Exactly seven years ago, I offered the city my life's work. To my hometown I devoted, I donated my large body of artwork along with the visual communication skills necessary to utilize this gift for marketing and promotion. Perhaps the timing wasn't right. A year ago, I offered the city this same gift. My presentation included a museum-quality mid-century modern-style print and two binders of artwork samples. The city council didn't even acknowledge my donation. The binders were returned, and I've often wondered, what happened to the large print? Now, for the third time, the third time's a charm, I offer this donation. I hope my gift will be appreciated and utilized. Currently, I'm living at Waldorf Manor in DHS. Recently, I was accepted to live at Allo Palm Canyon. I must vacate Waldorf Manor by November 27. However, the Indio Housing Authority is taking forever to process my Section 8 relocation paperwork. I have not signed the lease with Allo and can't be sure they will wait another month. In seven days, I have nowhere to go but the Indio Homeless Shelter. Meantime, all my possessions are being destroyed in a rat-infested storage space. The filthy rats have chewed a couple of my precious oil paintings. Currently, I'm completely out of cash due to deposits in this horrific storage space. At Whispering Waters, Mr. Dagostino, my neighbor, often harassed me by banging on our shared kitchen wall. I stopped cooking and eating regularly, quickly losing 40 pounds and becoming dangerously underweight at 95 pounds. This has seriously affected my heart and circulatory system. I'm painfully weak, and my legs, feet, and hands have become somewhat paralyzed. However, the worst thing about the city's crimes is the destruction of my small, lovely family. Since the fraudulent termination of tenancy due to unmanageable distress, my daughter cut off contact with me. She is a hospital RN, and her husband is an attorney. They have a seven-year-old daughter who I have not seen for over three and a half years. Sadly, everything would have been okay if my son-in-law had just called City Housing Management and said, "Wait a minute. A year ago, I emailed the property manager asking for a reasonable accommodation. My mother-in-law has been victimized by neighbors. She is not a hostile person in the least. This is a tragedy that must be healed."
Ragsdale, please, if you would.
Okay. Please take care of these wrongs immediately. I've asked to be restored to any city apartment, and I can stay in a temporary unit while I wait for a permanent home. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Patrick Lowry?
Good afternoon. Patrick Lowry, 22-year resident of Rancho Mirage. A general statement toward Mr. Wile. Appreciate his comments. Appreciate you, even though we'll never see eye to eye on most things, but I do want to say, we share one thing in common. We have a deep, maybe measurable, love and gratitude for our wives, and I say that with passion. My wife is a tremendous leader in business, so wonderful that you have such a relationship, wonderful that I have such a relationship. Let me say to Mr. Downs now frankly and directly, and I can't wait to see one more of his little treatises, I do not believe that we should have a rotating mayor. I believe in a mayor, single point of accountability. I also believe that we should have term limits, fresh views, new ideas, more spark, more action. I want to see that, and I'm going to push hard in 2006, 2026, can you believe this? 2026, to get my point across publicly, social network, and so forth. We've got to change the way we do business. We have to do business like we are business people. Now, I attended an autism get-together in Fort Worth. Our godson is autistic. Breaks my heart, but he's a wonderful, wonderful fellow. And I sat there in this thing, 400 people, committed one- And I sat there in this thing, 400 people, committed $1.6 million at this gathering. Rich Texans, just like the movies. It was good stuff. And I hope that we, in this city, instead of giving $2 million to this hospital that gets on my nerves, we would look and give $2 million to some way to take a single-focused item like autism and dedicate ourselves to it. Our foundation, too, gave money to the museum because they have an approach to autism. Quiet room, fidget toys, good stuff. Hope this comes up someday on this calendar. Okay, next. Crime is always an issue to me, but I do enjoy our sheriff's department, and they have a great program. Blue envelope, do you know the blue envelope program? You put this on your dashboard. Let's say you have a problem. Autism may be a problem. You're on the spectrum, you can drive. But you may have other emotional problems and issues. You put this on your dashboard, your license, your registration, and so forth, so when the officer comes up, he's aware and can manage any unusual situation rather than have a reaction that doesn't fit really what's going on in somebody's mind. So I hope the city will somehow sit with the sheriff's department, this is great, repeating it again. I know I criticize sheriffs. I don't criticize them for their courage, for what they do. I criticize them because they're not on the highways and they're not abiding by the contract. What a program. What a progressive way to look at things. One more thing. In listening to Ms. Ragsdale, and give me one more minute, I know I've gone over, but it makes me think of Maya Angelou. I'm a fan of hers. I'm the giant of metaphors, right? And she made a con... I wrote it down, and it's not perfect. The best part of life is thriving with passion and compassion and generosity and kindness. It's not so hard for you guys to be kind to figure this thing out. Not that hard. Okay. Look forward to seeing me in 2026, going after you for term limits, and the mayor. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Lowry. Trevor Ryan.
I'm here to ask to open and maintain the easement granted in instrument number 169692 for non-exclusive access. My name is Trevor Ryan. Start with a small introduction. I was born in Rancho Mirage 27 years ago. I've been Rancho Mirage library cardholder since before I could read. My family has held property in Riverside County in Rancho Mirage since the 1960s. I'm also a civil engineer by trade, so since my family's been here for so long, I consider myself a direct constituent. And I believe that this trail that I'm bringing up today should be opened and maintained for the current residents. This trail was granted by a prominent and well-known man, Frank Sinatra, that is well-respected by the community. His name is on the frontage road of the building we're in today, City Hall. So I ask that you respect his wishes and the wishes of the constituents. And what a great opportunity to help preserve the character and identity of Rancho Mirage to maintain this equestrian trail. For those that are lawful horse owners and those that have acquired conditional use horse ownership, it is called Rancho Mirage after all. That is not just a marketing name, it is a real place. So I stand here as evidence that this rural area is not being outdated, that it is valuable and worth being maintained. So please do not administrate out the character and integrity of this neighborhood. And if you haven't had a chance to walk along the Butlerie Blum's Trail, then I invite you to because it's an excellent walk. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Wally Melendez.
I'd like to commend the elected officials and everybody else on a wonderful transfer of power orderly and peaceful and friendly, unlike what's been happening at the nation's The three-legged stool of the government of our country is holding up, but we're still not out of the woods. The monsters that took control of the executive office are defeated, or rather, they're going down, but they're still not defeated. They're kicking and punching and screaming, but they're going down. The Justice Department has held up. The Congress has held up. The Congress did a wonderful job with the thing to bring out the Epstein files. I'm proud of them. I'm actually very proud of the Congress and the judicial system. They started out slow, but they're gaining momentum, and they got their hands on the executive branch that just went out of control with power, with madness, with power of the executive branches of government. So I'm commending you all, and I'm commending the three-legged stool of the federal government. The great people, the people that wrote that constitution, God bless them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker card. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? That was the last speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, it's closed session. I'll ask our city attorney, Colin Kirkpatrick.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. And it's been a pleasure serving you throughout going mayor. We'll be convening in a closed session for the item before you, listed as 8A, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. Case name unspecified, since disclosure may jeopardize existing settlement negotiations.
Thank you. We will now recess to closed session. Council is now returned from closed session. I will ask the city attorney, Colin Kirkpatrick, for any reportable actions.
Thank you, Mayor. No reportable action taken today.
Thank you. The meeting's adjourned.